Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming to tonight's Planning Commission meeting. I'm gonna ask Commissioner Keldorf to lead us on the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you, Michelle. Can we have roll call, please?
Chair Valdino.
Here.
Vice Chair Newman.
Present.
Commissioner Heschler.
I'm here.
Commissioner Keldorf.
I am here.
Commissioner Wingate.
Here.
Alright, thank you. Now it's time for public communication. Anyone wishing to address the commission on anything not on the agenda, now would be the time to step forward.
Well, good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the Planning Commission. I didn't fill out a card.
We don't have cards.
Okay.
Anyone who wants to speak, we're just like, please, come on up.
Well, I'm Scott Mitnick. I'm the new city manager, and Sam asked me to come by and say hello. So I'm here to say hello, and I should commend you for what you do. It takes a lot to be on a committee, commission, or a board. It's all your time. And Planning Commission, you probably have the most voluminous packets, right? Read through all the land use issues and so on. So, hey, it's just, it's an honor to be here, and whatever we can do in our office to be helpful. You're in great hands here with Sam and his staff, and of course with our city attorney's office and their talented attorneys. But whatever we can do, we're here to help. And the role of the Planning Commission is really important as you vet out a lot of the difficult land use issues for the city council. So I should say, thank you for that. I'm happy to be here. So, do you have any questions of me?
Welcome.
Thank you, welcome.
We're happy to have you. Looking forward to working with you on future plans of the city here.
Okay.
Thank you for taking the time to come by.
Yeah, and welcome. Welcome to town.
Okay. Have a very productive meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, anyone else with any public communications? Okay, seeing no rush to the podium, I will close public communications. Consent calendar, there are no items, which will bring us to written communications. Greg, you gave us this amended section 7.2.1, correct?
Yes, and that will be part of the public hearing to come.
Okay. And then the Sweeney email, has that made it into the written communications? Is that part of the packet?
That is as well. I didn't reproduce that because I know all of you received it.
Right, that's fine. I just want to make sure it's included with all the information we have.
It is.
Alright, we didn't receive any other emails or written communication?
No more.
Yeah, but was that about this?
It was unrelated.
That email from the Tonga Indian tribe was just like, "We're here."
Right.
"We want to have a person on site."
Yeah, I was gonna ask about that.
Can we talk about that later, at the end of the meeting, maybe? Do you know what we're talking about?
Well, there's multiple tribes that we deal with on a regular basis, but I don't.
We all got an email with a letter from someone saying they want a representative on site for all construction services so they could look for artifacts. So.
There's, I don't know, at least seven or eight of that one.
Okay. But it's not, it's not relevant or specific to the Raytheon project, so.
No, this one's already been through that whole process, and I don't, not even sure that that requirement existed at the time.
I'm not sure it exists now.
It does, actually.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Alright, let's go on to new business. We are here for environmental assessment number EA 905 to amend Development Agreement DA 1102, mitigation monitoring and reporting program MMRP, and conditions of approval for the 142-acre project site at 2,2100 East El Segundo Boulevard, which is the Raytheon Campus Project. Can we have a staff report, please?
Sure. This is, the specific plan is called the South Campus, or El Segundo South Campus Specific Plan, and this is the application to change the phasing. So let's take a look, first of all, at the controlling documents that we're dealing with here. First is the specific plan. The specific plan allows for multiple phases, but it's not specific on how many. Then we have a development agreement, which I've included in your packet. That specifies two phases because that's based on the EIR where they studied two phases because that was how they could encompass all of the potential impacts in a worst-case scenario. And I guess from an environmental perspective, building everything at once would be considered the worst-case scenario. And then, just to make it all real fun and confusing, there's also a tentative map which has three phases, and they don't match up in any way, except for Phase One. So let's take a look at this. This is, I'm gonna concentrate on the development agreement here. This is Phase One. This has already been sold, so it's no longer Raytheon's property. And everything else is Phase Two, according to the development agreement, okay? And whenever Phase Two is started, in any place along, within what's shown as Phase Two, Nash Street has to be connected from the top to the bottom, and that's represented by the red line. Also, this segment of Continental Boulevard would have to be built, and in many cases, an offer of an easement would have to be given, even though it is entirely within the secure perimeter of Raytheon. And there are nine intersections that would have to be improved. The bottom two, I've made blue because they're outside of the city, so that makes it even more complicated. So Raytheon approached us and said, "I want to develop this part or sell it. Sell it to somebody to develop." At the moment that anybody starts construction on any of these, then Nash Street has to go in. They recognize that. There's never been any dispute or controversy about that. Nash Street is intended to go in very shortly after someone starts their plan checks. And they said, "Well, but if we're only building, if we're only selling this part in the gold, and that will be developed, then what's the point of being required to build that little segment of Continental that's inside of our gate and it doesn't go anywhere?" And furthermore, all of the off-site improvements would mitigate for the entire campus, and if only that one-fifth or so on the right is built, it's out of proportion. So it creates a very high barrier for moving forward if they have to do all of this at the first, you know, turning of a shovel on the golden part. So this is their proposal. Oh, and this bit here, this is linked to the track map. That's an entirely separate process, so it may not ever show up in a reasonable time. So let's look at the proposal. So they're saying, "Let's, let us sell the gold part. Nash Street will be built." And I'm gonna take a little detour here. There's a side issue that we negotiated as well, which is this. This is designated as the park. It's seven and a half acres, and it's in the most inconvenient location for us and for Raytheon. So realistically, the park will probably stay up here in Area Three, which would be Phase Three. And it would be, there would be some adjustments of those lot lines, but it would be a minimum of seven point, I think it's five-four acres, to be, you know, consistent with the approvals that were already in place. Everything else then becomes, oh, and anything built in Phase Three, anything, would trigger this part of Continental because that's how access would be granted. This would be Phase Four then, and that's where Raytheon's operations are currently, and most of the, I think, most of the parking lots in there, too. And under the new proposal, any net increase in the square footage, and this goes back to the, to the addendum that I've given you on the dais, would trigger this. So if they, if they build another building in Area Four, then we're gonna have that connection all the way through. So that's the proposal. So let's take a look at the incentives and why we think this is a win-win. From Raytheon's perspective, the sale of, well, the sale of these Phase Two will allow them to make some upgrades and improvements to their facilities that are needed. They're, and Mr. Scott posed this here to explain some of this to you at the end, but they're expanding rapidly in their workforce, and they're trying to squeeze a bunch of people into the space they have, and so they need to reconfigure some of the interiors to make this possible. Another is that there's a, there's obligations in the environmental impact report that will not be, will not be dismissed, or they won't be excused from providing, for example, the nine intersections off-site. But rather than having them build all of those improvements at once at the beginning, in the upfront stage, this would allow us to use the provision of fair share, which the mitigation monitoring program already allows. So we thought we were going to amend that. We ended up not amending the mitigation monitoring program because it already has that language in it. So as every building comes in, it will be assessed its proportion of the total development that was approved and studied in the EIR and in the original specific plan. So just to be clear, and I think it probably needs to be said, no additional square footage is being proposed, no additional construction other than what was already approved in the specific plan and studied in the EIR. So from the city's perspective, this lowers the barriers to development, so that kickstarts the projects. This, this specific plan was approved five years ago, and up to now, one segment was sold, but nothing has been constructed yet. Grading permits are not issued yet, as far as I know. And so we're hoping that the attractiveness of this area on the east side will start the process of seeing some ground turned and some projects built. And the idea behind that is if not every mitigation measure has to be paid for upfront, and Continental doesn't have to be built, it makes it reasonable to do this. So the key thing for the city is that Nash Street will be built. Nash Street is considered a very, very important link for the city. It should relieve a lot of the congestion that we see on PCH, especially during rush hours. Another thing is that the fair share payments can start. We'll start getting some of that money right away. Another is that, and this was the city's request, that there be some flexibility related to the open space. So we already know that there's a, there's a probability, a high probability that the open space will be left more or less where it is, in some configuration in that general area.
In Phase Three?
In the Phase Three area. But the Phase Three that I showed you is, here, I'll flip to it real quick. That's about twice as much as that parcel 11, the triangle one I showed you. So not all of it will be the park, but that, but the equivalent square footage. And so we already know that's gonna happen, but you know, that's still possibly inside of the secure perimeter, which becomes a very inconvenient public park. And they could take it out, but moving the perimeter is a process. Just, I'm sure Scott can elaborate on that. There's the federal government, DOD, or whoever is involved in making, you know, the assessments and everything. So the city thought, "Well, we want to be able to negotiate other options, other opportunities that maybe the equivalent value could be put into other park facilities within the city at mutual agreement, if it comes to that."
How would that be negotiated, though?
That would be.
At the staff level?
That would be, well, negotiated at the staff level, but it would come here and then be approved by the city council.
Okay.
Yeah. It would be an amendment again to the development agreement, probably.
Because 7.5 acres of land outside of town is what?
I don't know.
I know.
Yeah, it's a lot.
That's my point.
Yeah. Well, no, well, we're making separate unrelated plans to have professional specialists in that kind of area be available to us, and they will help us to understand that.
Okay.
Okay. So, in a nutshell, we feel that this is, as I said, a win-win situation where it's good for Raytheon. They can achieve some of their short-term goals, accommodate the influx of engineers and other employees that they're experiencing now. From the city's perspective, we're gonna get Nash Street sooner than later, and we'll see some new development. We've actually already had a couple of inquiries about some of the properties, so there's interest out there from some high-tech. Was it, I got one from a biomed company, and I think there have been a few others as well. And so that's a good thing. And it, the other thing I wanted to mention was we've also asked for the development agreement to be extended another five years, because we don't want to run into a situation where the development agreement expires, and then we have to figure out what things are enforceable and what aren't, so.
Does that extension extend their time limit of when they have to build Nash?
No.
It just allows them more time to?
That's a very good question. No, Nash is still on the same schedule. If a Nash isn't built in, I believe, five years from now, they have to pay the city $5 million cash in unmarked bills.
That doesn't mean they don't have to build Nash. That's just like a penalty, right?
That's part of the stuff we're trying to figure out, because it would, it would be inside of their campus, what would be the point of making them build it if we wouldn't have access to it? You know what I'm saying?
If they sell.
Well, if they sell, that's a different matter.
They have to build the connection no matter what.
If they pay us $5 million, that means they didn't do anything, right?
That just means they didn't build the road in time. They have to build it by a certain date, or they pay $5 million. If they sell, they have to build the road no matter what. So no matter what, they're building the road. Correct?
Possibly.
Yeah.
We've been trying to study that.
I mean, if they don't sell anything, if they just leave it as it is now,
Yeah.
then they don't have to build any roads or do anything.
Right.
But if they sell Phase Two, which is what we're calling it now, they have to build the road.
Somebody has to.
Right.
Maybe the buyer.
Well, it's not, it's not the sale per se. It's the development of it.
Right.
One of the reasons why the timing is now is because it may take a while to build Nash, and now we have five years to get it done. We're not extending the deadline for Nash, to answer your original question. It's still on the same term.
Yes, the, the extension of time, it's not five additional years? It's just, instead of having to execute the option, you're making it 15 years. Or is it five additional years?
I don't, you know, I don't remember the option coming up in the discussion. I'm sorry.
Yeah, the, the original development agreement was for 10 years with an option of five years. This would make it 15 years with an option for another five years.
Okay, so the option stays. Got it.
And to clarify, the sale does not trigger the road.
No.
Development triggers the road.
Yeah, any development at all. And I also want to add, if the development were to occur on Phases Three or Four, that would still trigger Nash, and it may also trigger Continental.
As I understand it, they develop one more square foot, and it triggers all of their obligations.
Currently, yes.
Right.
Yeah.
And that was the deal that we had in the development agreement?
That was the deal.
You could sell Phase One off.
Yes.
But as soon as you develop one square foot of Phase Two, we're gonna get all these public benefits, the traffic improvements, the roads, and everything else.
Yeah, except that, that the roads, you would definitely want to call a public benefit. The traffic stuff are mitigations, so it's like a canceling of a detriment.
Right, right. But as I remember, the environmental impact report, there were some traffic impacts that could not be mitigated, especially where we have that railroad track. You can't expand that road there. There are gonna be very real traffic impacts.
Right. And El Segundo Boulevard is scheduled to be rebuilt in the near future, and so those impacts are gonna be done. They're not gonna wait.
That's that stoplight at the Phase One there?
Yeah, and also the intersection of Nash and, and El Segundo. That's one of the ones on the list that I showed you. And further over, on aviation as well. So this is all scheduled to be constructed in the next, what would Lisa want, say, two years? Within two years. So this project, as they develop, will be paying into the fund to do that, and those that are developed afterwards will be like refunding the city for their work on those things. But those intersections are getting, getting mitigated sooner.
And Greg, back to that open space area, that was to be triggered when anything after Phase One, we were going to get that.
No, it's, it's a little more complicated, and I couldn't figure out how to make a slide that could tell the story without. But the way it works is.
If they sell 20%.
If they sell 20% of what's left over after Phase One.
After Phase One.
Then it has to be open to anyone who is a Raytheon employee affiliate or working on the campus. So other companies that they sell properties to, those employees also get access to it. But it's not a public park at that point.
And also, the way it's amended or proposed to be amended means that that's not triggered by Phase Two, right? Because we're taking out the road acreage. Because it's like 28 acres, but when you take out the road, it's 20. Had that area always been there, and the road always been there?
Well, the road's not there now, but it, but we didn't change the alignment of the road, the proposed road.
No.
Nothing like that's changed, no. The size of all the lots are exactly like they were.
So that open space was already negotiated in the original development agreement?
Oh, yeah.
Same area, same location?
Yeah, except that it was.
Location was kinda up. They said we're gonna give you seven and a half acres for a park. Yeah.
A park that's apparently not a public park.
No, it becomes public.
It becomes, there's a separate trigger which, which I.
Maybe I can explain.
Okay.
So there were, there were a couple of triggers that would make it possible to be a public park. Number one, as Mr. McLean mentioned, that if more than 20% of the property is sold to a non-Raytheon affiliate, then they're required to make that park open to the entire campus. That's one. Number two is that if Phase Three, or what we're calling Phase Three, if that area gets developed, then that's where the existing park is, they're required to provide a park. But Raytheon has an option of providing that park within a security area or not. If they choose to build it outside of the security area, at that point, the city has an option of taking over the park. But if they choose to build it within the security area, we don't have that option. So by adding that third paragraph in, I think it was 9.3, we feel like it gives actually flexibility on both sides that when the time comes of, when they want to develop that Phase Three, and they want to negotiate or speak with the city and say, "You know, we could calculate what the value of that land is, and if the city chooses to provide that park somewhere else, then we have the option of making that happen."
So as this is being amended, if they can sell and develop Phase Two and not have to give us the seven and a half acre park, that's contingent on whatever they decide to do with Phase Three?
Yeah, as, as it is right now, and I'm thinking, the way the agreement is, is, the way the agreement is today and the way the agreement is proposed, making changes to Phase Two doesn't trigger them giving us the parkland.
And that's because Phase Two is less than 20% of the overall site?
Right, exactly.
Well, even when.
How many acres is Phase Two?
Even when Phase Two is over 20 acres, it doesn't trigger a dedication of parkland. That just.
That just says that it has to be open to the campus.
Open to the other employees, yeah.
The park has to be open to other employees.
Right.
So explain to me again how we get a public park out of this.
When, when they start developing Phase Three.
Which they may never do.
No, they may not. Or if they develop Lot 11, which is in the triangle in the middle, if they develop that, then they have to give that park on Phase Three, or, yeah, by then, there's gonna be the only option left.
They develop inside that ring, then they still owe us seven and a half acres. Okay.
Wait, say that again. So.
Yeah, again.
If they, if they choose to build the park within the retaining, within the perimeter, then they owe the city seven and a half acres or equivalent.
Or a financial equivalent.
If they build a building there. They can build a park for themselves at this little triangle inside their perimeter, and that satisfies the development agreement. Basically, the city gets nothing out of that. They get their own park, their employees get a park, and they don't have to give access to anybody, unless it's like other people who work there.
No, I will say that the only, the only clarification on that is I believe that there's a requirement to offer, dedicate the park, but if it's inside the perimeter, we wouldn't take it. And so it's not necessarily a good deal.
Well, that's an illusory agreement, then. You're saying you're gonna give us something we don't have access to?
Right, but this is the original agreement. We're not, we're not making this change now. This is how it is today.
That was in the original agreement.
That was in the original agreement.
That makes no sense.
I know.
It makes no sense.
It doesn't make any sense.
So.
What, what was the intent of that?
But I, but I would say, I would say, though, that under the, under the proposed changes, the probability of the park being on Lot 11, which is in the middle of their campus, is quite small. And the probability of it being in Phase Three is quite high, which means that if they choose to not be in the park business anymore, and it's right on the, on El Segundo Boulevard or some, or on Continental Boulevard, then we will accept the dedication.
But wouldn't it be better to have some certainty?
Yeah, why not just change the development agreement to say, "You can't build within your little compound. The seven and a half acres has to be in Phase Three." That, that seems to make more sense, and that seems to get to the goal of what we want, which is we need more parks.
Or they would have the opportunity to financially give us the equivalent, too, is what, is what, is what we're saying.
Yeah, but we want, I would rather have the land.
Yeah, if the financial contribution is gonna get thrown into that pool as maintenance costs, and we're never really gonna see any benefit from that. You know, that, that money is just gonna, if it goes in the general fund, it's gone.
That, and the financial costs. That and the financial cost of seven and a half acres is a hundred million dollars in El Segundo, potentially.
Yeah, that's right.
Right, and there's no way they're going to give us a hundred million dollars-
No.
In compensation for that part. They're going to give us, you know, five bucks.
Yeah.
So it, I agree, we need the park, we need that land.
Yeah.
We don't have enough fields. Um, but I'll digress for now.
That does bring a question though, I mean, is what we're reviewing just these changes, or is there any conversation about additional changes?
I would suggest that you're reviewing these changes for now, and we can always go back and renegotiate additional if, you know, in a, you know, but there's, there's a, there's a, there's a somewhat of an urgency now, but I'll let Raytheon address that.
And maybe they could also a- address the original intent of the way that is, that was negotiated, so that we have a better understanding of what their thought process is.
Well, as I recall, we approved the development agreement, but not the public benefit part of it. We thought it wasn't enough to compensate for the windfall of the land change that Raytheon was getting from going from parkland to mixed commercial, hundreds of millions of dollars.
But that was as everything triggered after Phase One, that triggered everything.
Right.
Right.
Right, and now, the way I read it, and correct me if I'm wrong, they're coming to us saying, we want to phase this out so that we can push the expense of the road onto somebody else. So the original public benefit, the original public benefit was, we're going to shoulder the burden of this and we're going to pay for this road.
Or the sale of that would help finance it. That, that's not, that's, you know, from-
It still does.
It, it, right, but-
It still does.
But i- it does, but, but what's happening is, what's being pushed is the, that, the open space that we thought we would, would be have access to, once Phase Two, once after Phase One and everything began to get triggered after that, right?
Well, I, yeah, I think we're all in agreement, a park behind a secure fence is of no use to the city.
No.
That's right.
It's, it's a gift with no meaning. It's, it's, has no value, no public benefit. So I, if we want the park to be in Phase Three, then we need to renegotiate the development agreement to put the park in Phase Three, and make it not just for employees, but for, you know, little league teams.
And it's possible though that Phase Three wouldn't be developed.
There's, they don't have to develop Phase Three. Like this little connecting road between the Nash and here, they're never going to develop that. They don't want a road going around their secure facility. That's just there for a placeholder. Um, so the problem with chopping this thing up is that we lose control of all of these benefits we've already negotiated.
Kind of, but the park doesn't have to be built now. I, I mean, the existing DA doesn't necessitate the building of a park.
It, no, no, it doesn't, unless they sell twenty-two percent of the property that they, we've rezoned and allowed them to sell.
Right.
Right, which is what they want to do, they want to sell it, they want to develop it.
This was the original park? No, I get that, I guess I'm just saying, we're not giving away a park, we don't have a park right now.
Correct, correct, but the park was offered as part of the development agreement that was negotiated by City Council, along with other public benefits.
Kind of, but it was never access, I mean, the way I read it was that it was, it would be for use by Raytheon, Raytheon employees and then any other employees of the campus, not the public.
That's what it says. And I think the point is, is that sounds like a crummy deal, and, and if we're looking at this now, why, why, why continue with the crummy deal?
Right, but saying no to the division of phases doesn't solve the, that problem.
No, no, it doesn't.
Just making sure we're all saying the same thing.
I think so. Hope so. Okay. Any questions for staff? If not, we can open up public communication and talk to-
I think we, we should probably, or probably have said, if anybody did meet with Mr. Posen.
Oh, yeah, we had done it before.
Yes, just to disclose that.
Thank you.
Yes, I think we all did.
Carol, Carol and I went and met with, uh, Mr. Posen on last Friday morning.
I didn't have a chance to meet with Scott, I was in Utah.
Oh, yeah. And we, we appreciate your time.
Yeah, and Michelle and I met with him today, so, thank you.
Um, I do have a couple of questions for staff before, maybe just, can we clarify, so seven one, point one, point three in the original DA? I'm not sure I understand what that's saying.
What page is that, Michelle?
Page ten. Yeah, so page twenty-eight of our packet. Developer will receive in lieu credit against city's traffic impact fees for the actual cost of construction of the Nash Street extension. So does, is that a dollar for dollar?
Mm-hmm. So for every, every dollar that is spent on the Nash Street extension, it reduces their obligation to pay the, um, traffic impact fees? And, 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 I'm, no, that's all I'll say.
One, one caveat to that is, the, the cost of building Nash is, is considerably more than what the traffic impact fee is. So, um, and I'm making up these numbers, if the traffic impact fee is two million dollars or whatever, the cost of building Nash is going to be, you know, four or five times more than that. So they're taking on the burden of doing above and beyond what their traffic impact fee obligation is.
And if Phase Two is sold and it's the buyer's understanding that they're responsible for building Nash Street, is that up to buyer and seller to negotiate who actually gets that relief? And then in four eleven, I am reading it just the way that it's written, is that it's, the term of this agreement is fifteen years from the effective date, so it doesn't talk about an extension?
Well, are you looking at the, uh, amendment?
The amendment.
Yeah, because the original language would have said ten years.
But then there was a five-year extension option.
Yeah, let me find it. It was af- after the, uh, right- Was it four eleven term?
The, um, the first sentence of the existing DA is amended to extend it to fifteen years-
Got it, everything else stays.
But the balance stays the same.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
The offset improvements, all those, um, the different intersections, is there a cost, a dollar cost associated with those at this point? Do we know what each of those, um, improvements will be?
Not until the time that, that somebody has to pay, they'll calculate it, because it changes.
But, but there are some criteria, some, um, you know, some specifications of what those improvements are.
Yeah, the, the mitigation monitoring program of the, of the EIR specifies that, um, an intersection needs a right turn lane on a certain direction of a certain length or signal upgrades or something like that, so the, the scope of that work is known, the pricing of it will be done when it's time to pay.
Yeah, my question was for the scope.
Yeah, and I will also add that, um, you know, if, if there's a long delay between Phase Two and Phase Three, then it gets recalculated, so, just because it's more expensive probably.
Has the sewer work been done yet?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? No?
Uh, I've got a question about the fees that, that are, um, being paid to the city, you know, the, the four million dollars or so. How were those negotiated? What does that number represent?
Where to begin?
Yeah.
When Raytheon first came, the only thing they offered to do was pay upfront all the impact fees they would have to pay anyway. And then I think it got continued or denied at the commission level, and then they came back with, uh, a little bit more, maybe like a million bucks or something. And I believe the commission said, well, we like the idea of the development agreement, but your public benefit is no way in proportion to the public benefit, or the benefit Raytheon is getting. Uh, so it passed through here with that kind of, uh, understanding. I remember Sam, when he did his report, he had like this scale where it was like, you know, it's just way off. And then there were negotiations with council and Raytheon where they came up with that number, and that's kind of where the park also became part of the benefit they're willing to give back to the city. So there was a cash payment and then there was this idea of giving seven and a half acres.
Maybe.
Well, the way it's written, it, it doesn't, the way the development agreement is written, it does not guarantee that we'll ever get that park, and I think that's a problem. But that, that all happened, you know, above our pay grade, after we kind of went through, I mean, we, we reviewed the environmental impact report, we, we reviewed the offset, the mitigation measures, and when it came to the development agreement, we just kind of said, that's not enough, and we want City Council to basically negotiate something better. And the end result is what we're kind of left with here.
And that was five years ago, or?
Was that two thousand sixteen, fifteen?
Sixteen, I believe.
Two thousand sixteen? Or fifteen?
Fifteen, yeah.
Fifteen, yeah. No, it was quite a, quite a long road. Any other questions? All right, let's-
Yeah, is that the end of the, your slides?
Well, if you want to look at the map, I've got that there too, that's all.
All right. Okay, thank you guys. Let's open public communication. First right is going to go to the applicant, Scott, have, step on up.
Thank you, I would, well, wanted to let you know, I would have come to Utah. I love Utah. I didn't know you were in Utah.
Do you like baseball?
They were streaming the games, I could have sent you the, you could have watched at home.
I would have, yeah. Um, well, thank you, Greg, I think Greg summarized it pretty well. I wanted to highlight a few, a few other things. So where we are right now as a company is, and some of you, um, probably know this, um, we're, we're growing unprecedented growth right now. We've hired over eleven hundred people in El Segundo this year so far, and we have probably three hundred more to go this year. Projections for next year are not quite that big, but they're in the seven, eight hundreds for El Segundo. I don't have any place to put these people. Um, and so we're trying to catch up because you, as you all know, we're, years before, we were in this consolidation mode, and you know, it, it's like turning an aircraft carrier, you can't just one day be in consolidation mode and the next day have eleven hundred people come knocking at your door, so. So we've been struggling and we're putting people all over the place, we're out in the market for about fifty thousand square feet of leased space uh, to get us through hopefully the first, second, or through the second quarter of next year, uh, or, I'm sorry, the fourth quarter of next year. And in the meantime, what we're trying to do is figure out, I had to put together, um, a real estate strategy, um, that I always intended this project to be a part of, and so, um, because it gave us the flexibility to do that. So the real estate strategy really is that we want, we're in, that we had to stop modernizing our facilities, we're in the process of just normal operating budgets, modernizing our facilities, increasing, you know, coming to more, um, more up-to-date office standards, a little higher density, more open collaboration space, all the things everybody else is doing, so it, it increases the amount of people you can get in a certain amount of space. But we had to stop that because of the growth. Uh, and so what this does, what, what, what the sale of this property does is it enables us to continue two things. One, it continues to, continue to, um, help fund, although it won't fund all of it, help fund, um, the modernization. It also helps me rely on property that will be developed in that Phase Two for our expansion needs beyond twenty twenty-one. Uh, I don't think there's going to be anything built there to use, uh, before then, because it takes a long time. But as, as buildings get built there, especially if it's leased space, commercial, commercially leased, leasable space, then that gives us the opportunity to expand within our perimeter. And so, uh, even though it's outside of our, it will be outside of our then perimeter, but it's inside the specific plan is what it really meant. There's a lot of infrastructure we have and a lot of things that go on in that campus, that it's a benefit to stay in the boundaries of what we currently are, um, for, for a lot of reasons. So that, that's kind of why we want, that I wanted to use this as part of our real estate strategy. Uh, we have not figured out how we will, what we would do in Phase Three yet, because Phase Two is really excess land that we're not, it's par- parking lots that we, even with all the people we've hired, we've still got way too much parking. We've got, we probably still have two or three thousand extra stalls with all the people. So then there's storage lots and stuff like that, so that was an easy one to carve off. Uh, there's another component up at the top that's retail, that would add a little bit more retail amenities, uh, uh, for the site and for El Segundo. Uh, it was just an easy one to carve off. We got permission from the government to pull our perimeters in to the inside of Nash Street, that was, took a long time to do. And, and we haven't even talked to them about pulling in the perimeter on Continental, because then we're starting to, you know, really squeeze our, 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 our first line of defense down around the facilities and the activities there. So that's when we came up with the, with the, uh, proposal to, um, to go ahead and, uh, try and get approval to phase it, the two major phases left would be Phase Two and Phase Three. Uh, Phase Four is really our main campus, it's the main operations we have there. Um, there's not much you can do there, um, but, uh, that's, it's just the Phase Four. So the, the reason, then the way we make this pencil out really is to be able to not have to, um, consider all the burdens upfront uh, of all the mitigation measures that are not going to really benefit the part that we are, uh, trying to develop in Phase Two. To build Continental, it didn't really show you a map of the facility underlying that, but to build Continental now or during Phase Two would basically put a road right through the middle of our parking lot. Um, and it'd be very disruptive and, and it just doesn't make sense to do that. So that's why we asked for this, uh, Phase Two. Um, so it's really to, uh, to, to, uh, to, um, continue that, and there always was, I realized early on that one of, one of the biggest, uh, desires that the city had and one of the benefits was Nash Street. Um, we went around and round for years on Nash Street, um, but I see it as a benefit to Raytheon as well. And so I see also that we're, you know, we're coming up on five years on the development agreement now, and there hasn't been a shovel in the ground yet. So I'm worried about getting there. I mean, I can always write a check to the city for five million dollars, that road's worth a lot more than five million dollars to both of us. Um, so I, I really want to build the road and build the, um, and get it done. We're not, we're not proposing that we, like they said, move the deadline out to the fifteen years, still at the same time. We would literally put that obligation and the timing of that obligation on the developer, when they, they will, they, they will consider the cost of building that road and their, and whatever their price is. But I want them to have the obligation, they have the commitment to meet that date. Uh, they build roads, we don't build roads. Uh, so, uh, it becomes a package that way. I also think that, um, the, on the park issue, um, you know, the, it, it's a, it's a, it is a complicated issue, and it went, we went round and round and round for that. We ended up landing that park in parcel eleven. At one time we had it on parcel seven, but it ended up in eleven. Um, I can't even remember how it got to eleven. Uh, but the development agreement gave us the opportunity to put the park really, really, uh, from a, from a lot perspective, wherever, wherever we wanted to. So, pretty much. So basically, once we've done this, the only place left for that park is Phase Three. Because that, that parcel eleven is all parking. It is all parking and right up against my perimeter. It, it, I can't see that as being a logical location for a park. And so it's got to really go into Phase Three.
What about seven?
Seven's not big enough either.
Or eight.
And eight, and there's, no, we, seven and eight, we looked at seven and eight, I think we'd have to take probably ha- probably around half of eight, something like that. I don't, it's kind of hard to see right there, but we did that. But, um, that, I think that we would rather have, because of what we got right there, we'd rather have the development there that we could use. Um, and if we do put a park, I'd like the park to be over by where the, um, golf course is. It makes sense to be over on that side to me, plus, if you- So if you look at Lot Twenty-Six there, Lot Twenty-Six is an offer of dedication, will be an offer of dedication to you guys to, into the, to the, uh, to the golf course there. Um, and if we can tie that in with whatever we do with the park, then that may be of benefit to the city as well, uh, if you ever did anything with, uh, the golf course. So that, that's, that's, uh, in the development agreement, we offer that to you guys as dedication. The other thing we offer over on Phase Two is Twenty and Twenty-Two down below, uh, those will be offered to you for dedication for, uh, connecting to Coral Circle.
To the, to the east.
Yeah, to the east. So those are all part of, those are all agreed upon, we're not trying to take that away. Uh, what we're literally trying to do is phase the onsite improvements, um, so that when we, when we build in, in Three or do anything in Three, that's when we do Continental, because that's when we'd actually get the benefit of Continental. And then the on, the traffic mitigation measures now would, basically, they, they calculated a methodology to, to actually calculate fair share, because I don't think it was actually calculated before, it was just said fair share, but nobody really knew how we were going to do that. So I think we tried to define that so people going forward, you know, wouldn't have to rethink that whole process. And it, true, the cost will change, as, as time goes on, longer it takes, cost change, it gets re-baseline. So we've agreed with that as well. So, let me sit, one second, excuse me. The other, the other urge, and the, and the other part of this that's an urgency, and I, just to be candid with you, um, um, there is an urgency to get this land sold this year, closed this year, because if I, I have, I have budget, I have that in my real estate strategy for this year, and I have budget in, not associated with this, the, the sale of this, but in my own operating budget, millions of dollars to do the work we have to do that won't be, that we won't be passing on, like the perimeter fence and all the security modifications we have to make there, the trap, a little bit of traffic reflow inside, things like that, I have to do that and I have to budget for it. Uh, and, um, I've, I'm pretty guaranteed of that amount of money. And I can do a lot of that work- And I can do a lot of that work and order some of that material for that kind of stuff next year. Whether I use it, install it or not, I can get it, install, purchase next year and do some of the inside work. So that's important from the timing perspective, and otherwise, I'm just afraid, literally afraid that if, if this goes on too much longer, that with everything else going on in the company, with merger activities and everything else going on, I don't want to lose sight of this. I don't want this to get overcome by events, and I don't want the company to just move on to something else because we, I think, I think, I think this benefits both of us, all of us. And there have not been any, there have not been any discussions whatsoever to date about slowing down any of our growth in the five-year period because the activities associated with this merger, potential merger, they're not competiments of ours. So it's, 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 it's not, it's not a competition of our resources. So I'm trying to think if there's anything else I can tell you on this.
I, I have a question. So Scott, when we met today, you mentioned you're hiring a thousand-plus employees a year, and you expect that for the next several years. If, and you also mentioned that you're out of space in your existing facility. If this doesn't happen, where do you put those people? Where, where, where do you house them on campus?
We, we would prob, well, we wouldn't house them on campus. We'd have to either go out and, we'd have to either build our own facility on campus, just go over and build, which we could do, right? It's going to trigger Nash, trigger everything else, but it'd be a whole different financial look at how we would do that. Or we would go off and lease additional space in the area, or we would hire them elsewhere.
Right.
So we're growing here, we're growing, we're growing at all our locations. It's not just here. But the most growth in our business, almost two to one, is here in El Segundo. And so, but the difficulty, even with the difficulty of getting people to move to California from another state, they are moving. But I don't know, you know, how long that's going to last, so.
So if you end up having to build new buildings yourself or in some other development, or developers rather, in Phase Two, can you build in, in the main area? Because that'd be Phase Four, right? And that would trigger all sorts of new things.
There's no room for Phase, there's no room to build anything in Phase Four really of any significance.
Okay, so everything you build has to be outside of Phase Four.
Yeah, we're not going to build anything in the main campus. The problem is if we decided to build ourself, it's going to, I mean, even, it's going to trigger a lot of these things. And so it's really, it just doesn't, I just don't see us doing that. I think we'd rather, we'd rather see it developed. We'd rather get some more amenities. We'd rather bring people in here. We'd rather be able to have some leased space there, hopefully, that we could go in and out of for our modern, get our modernization program back up. Because I, when I'm packed like I am in my facilities now, I can't, what I was doing was I was taking like of, you know, twenty-five thousand square feet of, of space at a time, and I was moving people out and upgrading their space and moving them back in. I have no place to put those people. And so part of this acquisition of space in the market right now that we're looking at is have some lily pad turnaround space so I can continue to do that. That was the original plan. Now that space, because of our growth, is probably going to get taken over by actual growth instead of being able to use as lily pad space. So it is, it is literally, I've been around long enough to know that it is, you build it and these people will come, and if there's not, there's other off-ramps that we have, especially if you're leasing it. Because we generally lease for five years with five-year options. So there, you know, we've got obligation commitments for up to five, at least no more than five years if we wanted to in case of a downturn.
So Scott, your goal is to sell off Phase Two, hopefully someone develops it, and then Raytheon could lease that property for the employees as they expand? Keep them somewhat close on campus?
That's exactly my, that's how I justify this, is that by developing, otherwise, otherwise I get no benefit out of it. You know, from, from, from real estate perspective, I get no benefit out of it. You know, you're just, you're just going to sell the land and then you're going, what, you're going to, I don't have any space. I can't just keep making the space that we have in the campus more dense. It just doesn't work that way. It's impossible. So, so that gives me the benefit that I'm looking for.
Do you have a pro forma that says how much of that, what percentage of Phase Two you need versus what you're going to, you know, let others use?
I, the only, the only, it's not really a pro forma, but I would say in my mind, as I look at my real estate strategy and I weigh out the needs, and it's not just people, so we have manufacturing growth as well in our facility. So that displaces people out of office space so we can expand. I'm probably going to be in the market for another two hundred thousand square feet.
And what percentage of that is in that space?
I, I don't know how much they could build there.
Yeah, the way this was written, they can move around the FIR. So there's an overall FIR for the project that they can build. Yeah, but you can kind of play with it on different phases and different lots. You could do a tall building or you could do a short, smaller building, or there's some flexibility in that. But whatever happens, it's going to come back, right, for some kind of design review?
Not necessarily.
No, no, because I, I don't believe so.
They would just be bound by the development agreement as long as they're within that.
They're bound by the development agreement and the specific plan.
Okay.
And, but to the point of the flexibility, though, to the extent that, that some of that density is transferred into a particular lot for a higher building or something, it just means more mitigation, fair share at that point, so. That's how it's going to be calculated. It's based on that.
And Scott, what, explain to us your interpretation of that open space area from the original development agreement, please. And, and since obviously the, the agreement was negotiated back when you were looking to downsize, now you have a little different thought process.
Right. So I'm going to, I hope I get this right, but I know Ryan will probably remember it as well. So we, we bounced around, let's talk about the location first. We bounced around the location of the park throughout, throughout the facility. And honestly, we got to a place that said, well, look, we got it, we have to allocate seven and a half acres, I think seven point five-four, something like that, acres, somewhere.
You wanted to do this for the city, for the community. You wanted to negotiate by offering something that would benefit not only the people on your campus, but the community of El Segundo. Is that why this came?
My, the first thing was we have a park and I want to keep a park in the area.
For your, for your.
Not necessarily, in the, in the entire area. I want to keep a park there that my employees have access to. That doesn't mean it has to be my park.
I got it.
Right, so, so that's where the discussion kind of started. I did not want to take a park away from people, and we, we came up with, I don't know how we came up with the number of seven and a half acres, but we came up with seven and a half acres.
For your people, for your working environment?
For the envi, for the, for the area, a seven and a half acre park, park minimum. We knew that if we do something, it's, that park we have now is bigger than seven and a half acres. So we knew that if we do something in the development, we're going to have a requirement to fulfill by, by producing a seven and a half acre park or so, park somewhere in this park. And if my, wherever it is in this area, my employees would have access to it, whether it's a public park or my park.
Right.
Right, so that's, so from my perspective, I thought, perfect, you know, it's like I've got a park. But, oh, by the way, when we developed this, and we've got all these roads and all these public roads here, right, the city was interested in having a public park, right, in this area. So it's like with all these public roads, it, to my mind, it opened up the possibility of having a public park here because of all the public roads. And my comment specifically was, if it, if we, if it goes outside my perimeter, then I am not in the park business. I don't want to be in the park business, and I'd rather give it to the city. Now, the, in the way the development agreement is written, they have the, we have to offer it to them, but they don't have necessarily have to take it. So we'd have to figure that out, you know, I'm not going to, you know, I'd do, I'd have to work out my perimeter. I'm not going to put it outside the perimeter and then make, let, have public access where I have no control over it, and then nobody's watching the park.
Can I ask, what does take it mean? Does take it mean pay for it? Take it mean pay a dollar for it?
It's dedicated to the city.
Okay.
So the city has to, obviously.
It would be our land, and then we'd have to maintain it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But then who develops the park? Because I know the city doesn't have millions of dollars to build a park right now.
Do you?
We've talked about giving the land, but if you give us land, we still have to put in the infrastructure for a park, restrooms.
Development agreements talks about, there are specific requirements for what this open space has to have. And that, you know, I can't remember exactly who did that. I know there's requirements, but honestly can't remember.
I think it's Section Nine recreational access.
Point one, point two.
Section nine addresses parks, but it doesn't seem to require the building of a park.
I think it was in the specific plan.
Well, the specific plan provides for seven and a half acres of land to be used for open space and recreational purposes.
But somewhere in the specific plan, I think it defined the types of things you had to have in that park.
Amenities.
But does it explain who has to develop?
Tennis courts, volleyball courts, basketball court, yeah, things like that. That was in there somewhere.
Yeah, soccer field, yeah, okay. So it was really your intention, Raytheon's intention, that that would happen? That there would be a park onsite, outside of your perimeter that would, that the city would be able to use or have access to? That was the intention of the development agreement back then?
That was the intention, but we wrote it in such a way that, that because the, the perimeter question is tough because of the security. And we didn't know how we were going to lay this spot out yet. We didn't know how we were going to lay all this out. We didn't, we didn't know if the park was going to end up, if it ended up right there, it would never have been a public park.
Right, and originally Nash Street was to be exactly as it is right now. So originally, Lot eleven was, in theory, could be used as a park.
Could be, it, it could be used as a park, but I would, I would not make it a public park. It would be inside my perimeter.
Right, and if it's outside, you don't want to maintain or do anything.
So the, the only alternatives outside are seven and eight.
On that phase.
Yeah, but.
Or.
Phase three, two.
Are Phase Three, that's what I'm saying. Phase Three is, is where I think the park, I think the park belongs over in Phase Three.
Where it is now.
I agree.
I think that's where it belongs, and, and the question really is, what I'm, what I'm getting the question is that there's no guarantee that you're going to be offered, that I'm going to put it outside my perimeter and you're going to get, you're going to get a park. And that's really, I think, it. It's not that there's not going to be a park here, and it's not that, by the way, it's not that there's not going to be a park here that is open to anybody that's in this specific plan area either because anything over Phase Two, and you've already triggered this twenty, this twenty percent. So it opens it up automatically to anybody in this campus. It's whether it's open to the public, right, city. And I don't want the, I don't want to maintain a park that's a public park.
But how would it work if you, you have to give access to your employees and anyone else who works on this campus? You can't have it in your perimeter because then you've got some other employees who are not security Raytheon people coming into.
I could have it in my perimeter, but limit their access to ours.
Okay.
Well, I, what I'm hearing you say too is that you're hoping that the majority, the people that are using these new facilities are going to be Raytheon employees.
Well, we hope some of them will be. I don't know if it'll be the majority because I don't know how many will be there, but, but it would still, I would assume that they are going to be more Raytheon employees using these facilities, right?
Are you considering everything outside of what is now Phase Four? That is, everything outside of Phase Four is your exterior perimeter? So number three is outside of your perimeter?
No.
No, not necessarily.
Not yet.
No, not yet, not yet.
Not yet.
The only way that gets, that has to be, it's not that it couldn't be, but the only way that has to be outside of my perimeter is if I sell that to a third-party non-Raytheon affiliate, then, then that, then I have to make that a public road. I can't have a public road, I mean, it's going to be kind of awkward to have a public road going through my perimeter. So that would by default say that some portion of Phase Three would be outside of my perimeter if I did that. If I went and built it myself and kept it all in my perimeter, then I'd still have to build Continental, but it would not, I would not have to, but it would be a private street.
Private road.
It's be a private road, accessible just to you.
Yeah, would be dead end into nowhere.
Right, right. Well, yeah, well, it would be, it would tie into the road that we have down here, but since it's.
But no public, no public ass, access.
But it wouldn't be public anyway if they, if I built there.
Correct, because it's still part of your perimeter, inside of your perimeter.
So it's just internal traffic flow basically, right?
Yeah. So I'm just not, I guess I'm just not clear on, on how the city would ever have, ever have benefited from the original development agreement with open space.
Well, it kind of gives Raytheon the option to decide if they want to do it or not.
Yeah.
That's, that's the issue. It's like that little Phase Four road. Like, yeah, it's, it's a phase, but it's a phase they'll never get to. So we, if we agree to this and they build Phase Two and they never get to Phase Three, there's, there's no park. There's no benefit.
And, and in nine point two, it says a twenty-year irrevocable offer of dedication. What happens after twenty years? And the, I think the original agreement is.
It's very common for, for an offer of dedication to have a time limit, so it just gives the city the option.
Well, explain what that means. I think she means that the city only owns it for twenty years.
No, no.
You're saying anytime during that twenty years.
But this has been going on for quite a while already.
Right. But the, but the twenty-year time limit has not started yet.
Okay.
Right, the one that's triggered, the city has twenty years to accept and take that land over and maintain it and manage it.
Okay.
That's right.
And at the, at the end of that paragraph, it makes clear that, that only applies if it was outside the Raytheon security fence perimeter. So that, as, as the chair mentioned, the default position in Section Nine is that it would be within Raytheon's perimeter. And it's only if Raytheon agrees to it that it would be outside and it's a public park at that point. But the default, if I read the DA correctly, was that it was supposed to be within the perimeter. That's the default position.
And unless I'm reading it, the original agreement incorrectly or missing it, I mean, there's no conversation about whose obligation it is to develop the, the work.
Well, you can dedicate the land to us and we get a parking lot, and it could be seven and a half acres. And then the city doesn't have the money to actually build a park, let alone have programs and maintenance.
That should be part of the nine point three, the new nine point three conversation.
Well, what does the park look like now? I mean, there's a park that exists there now.
But it's an employee, it's a restricted access.
I understand, but what does the park look like now? Because if it's already a developed park and they give us a developed park, that's different than giving us a parking lot that has to be made into a park.
Very true.
Well, I've been there. Scott, thank you. I want to thank you for hosting the Challenger League on your facility.
Thank you.
I don't know if you had a time to go out and watch those kids play?
I did once.
Yeah, yeah. So I don't know if you guys, I know you've got girls, your boys are too young. Challenger League is, I think, only based out of El Segundo. It serves all of the South Bay. And it's a little league for special needs kids, but it's not limited to kids. They've got grownups, they've got, you know, all ranges of people. And the Little League in town in El Segundo, every major's team plays a game with the challengers where they go out and they basically buddy up with somebody, and they put a ball in a tee and they hit the ball, and the parents are all there and they have snacks, and it's great.
Nice.
I mean, it's one of the nicest things that the city does. And we lost the field over at Imperial when D.R. Horton bought that.
Right.
And Scott stepped up and made arrangements for the Little League to have access at Raytheon. So if anyone hasn't had the chance when Little League is, to go out for a Challenger game, it is, is something really special. So thank you for doing that. I do appreciate that.
My pleasure. It was, it was, it makes, those kind of things make you feel really good when you have an opportunity to do that. You know, you sit and argue about all kinds of other things all day long, but you go watch these kids play softball, and it, that's where, that kind of makes everything normal.
Yeah, and it's a great lesson for, you know, the, the thirteen-year-olds and twelve-year-olds.
Oh, absolutely.
Because they, they worry about Fortnite and phones, and it's like, you've got everything, you know? I mean, put yourself in perspective of what we're dealing with.
Yeah, and, and we're doing some other, I mean, like, like, I just signed up selling somebody, maybe Jade today. I was, just signed a paper for the El Segundo High School cross-country track meet coming up. So last year, we, we opened up our parking lot for supplemental parking because I guess it's at the lakes.
Yeah.
I haven't been to it, so we did that. So they approached us again this year, so I think it's in September. And so we just signed that today, so they'll be able to do that. So it's fun to be able to do stuff like that. The fire department comes over and uses our parking lot for training all the time. Got ladders going on. People think there's a fire in the middle of our parking lot. So I think, I think the, I don't want to sidetrack us, but I think the, part of, part of the, part of the feelings that were evident while we went through that process was the lack of involvement of Raytheon in the community. And I, I think, I believe, I guess you're the ultimate judge, is that we've made an impact on that. I think we hired a dedicated person finally to work the community. We've got one of our person who works in the general counsel's office is the, on the board of directors of the chamber. So I, I think we've made really good progress there. I, I do.
And I, I do appreciate that. I was the one probably most critical about the lack of participation of Raytheon, especially just the way it was presented of, well, you know, we're not going to offer a public benefit at first, and it's like, and you kind of say, well, we do all these other great things. And it's like, okay, like, if we live in town, we know the corporate partners in town who show up again and again and again. And Raytheon had not been there. It, it seems like you're making a good bridge to get there, and I do appreciate that. And I did talk with the Ed Foundation and found out you've been making regular donations to that foundation. I, I appreciate that very much because every dollar of school impact fee that goes on this campus does not come to our kids in El Segundo.
I know.
This is all going to Wiseburn and their mega school and all of that stuff. So everything that we get to do east of Polva, although fun and exciting, our kids don't get the money to benefit from that. And our kids, because of the. And our kids, because of the income bracket, we're only getting less and less and less from the state. So without the Ed Foundation to kind of bridge that gap, we would not have music, we would not have science, we would not even have P.E. So it's kind of a sad state of repairs, but the schools are kind of the backbone of this community, and it's kind of what makes this small town so special. So whatever Raytheon can do, I know you guys are big into STEM, you did email me a list of your other public involvements. I, I love the idea of Girl Scouts getting into programming. I think that's fantastic. And I know you've got a robotics program at Da Vinci. Do you have robotics at the high school here in, in town?
So I asked, I should have, I should have asked her today. I didn't think of that. I asked him and I thought that there was some involvement by the high school. I, I, I will have to find out. I don't want to say if it's not true. But I think there, I think I asked that before and Bridget had told me that, yes, there was. I don't know, I don't, I don't know what, what that means, so I will find out. But I, I, you know.
I mean, to have that many brains in town talking about science and engineering would be just fantastic because there is an engineering track in our high school where kids who just want to specialize in engineering take special classes in math and all that. So that's just like a, a perfect opportunity for, you know, more involvement from Raytheon. So again, thank you for the access to the fields, and that's, that's kind of why, like, this park is a very big deal to me.
Right.
I, I, it sounds like you want a park, it's going to help, you know, a park helps the businesses, it helps employees, it helps morale. But we also need a park for our kids and our community. So I, I would like to see some kind of change in development agreement to where the park is in phase three. And I don't know if that's possible, but that would allow you to develop, you know, phase two, and then when you trigger phase.
Well, that's absolutely possible, right? Because, I mean, and, and I'm, and, and, I mean, if you think about it, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not making any commitment that I can't make because there's no place left but phase three.
Right, right.
So it's like.
But it's, it's kind of wishy-washy.
Instead of eleven, and so, you know, I'm, so I, I, I want to, I want to really thoughtfully consider all this stuff because I, because I know I'm coming to you and I'm asking for your help because I've got this urgent thing that I got to do, and I've been, you know, I've been working on it forever. You've known about it for what, a couple of weeks? So it's a little more passionate or concerning to me, but, but I want to be able to work together because I think we've got a good working relationship. If there are things that, that we can do to get us, even if it's, even to me, if it's something that's going to hold up phase two, I'm concerned. If it's not something, if it's something that we can talk about before you develop phase three, we're going to solve all this world hunger problems or something. I'm making this up. We're going to do, we're going to solve this thing. You're not going to get any development if they see until we solve this park or whatever. I don't know if you're open to that, but I want to solve the park as much as you do. I really do. Because I know that right now I've got a piece of land sitting on eleven that it's not going to be a park.
Right.
Like ever. So I want to solve the park as well. I really do. And I, and my preference, honestly, my preference would be to make a public park there. I have to just, I can't make that commitment without knowing how our security folks get approval from the government and how they approach them. And they can't do that until I give them a plan, and I can't give them a plan yet.
You've got clients for everything that's outside of Nash Street. That's, that's what's being sold.
I have what?
You have, you have a, an interested party that you're selling.
Oh, a buyer for phase two?
A buyer for phase two.
We have lots. There's a lot of interest.
There's a lot of interest, exactly. So you don't, you're, okay, it's not going to be eleven.
No.
So right now.
It's going to be three.
You, you want it to be, yeah, it's going to be up in three. It's not going to be seven or eight. It's not going to be outside the perimeter where Nash Street is. It's not, it's not going to happen.
And I'm not going to.
And it's not going to be eleven.
Nope.
So the only opportunity is.
Three, and I have to provide a park. A park, so we got all that.
May or may not be open, exactly.
That's the, that's the whole issue. And so, really.
But my understanding is that the proposed amended DA would give the option for it to be off-site as well.
Or, or financial investment sort of, yes.
Financial.
A payoff or some, some sort of, however it's worded.
And is that going to be a hundred million dollars?
Right, and it's just, there's just, you can never give up land.
A lot of things, seven acres is worth a hundred million dollars.
Right, I don't, there isn't enough money in the world to give up a park.
That's right. There's no land.
It's not worth it to me. I, I don't even like the idea of having that option to come back and negotiate, and then we lose the park again. I mean, it's obvious in this dais that we all feel like the best public benefit we could get outside of Nash being connected, which will happen with phase two, is to get a public park in phase three. So if that's what we want, then let's put that in the development agreement as opposed to this language that allows them, you know, sometime in the future when maybe none of us are up here, to kind of say, okay, well, instead of giving you a park, we're going to pay a million dollars to fix the plunge or we're going to put it into whatever.
Well, the interesting thing is, Ryan, I mean, this is private property. It just happens to be incredibly, an incredibly large piece of land. So there really, there is no obligation on anybody's part to give the city of El Segundo property, other than the fact that it's been discussed and it's been part of the original development agreement.
Well, and if we, we could do all the things we talked about and, and, and if we don't do anything in phase three, you'd still never get the park.
Right.
So, and I can't, and I certainly can't stand here and say that, yes, we're going to develop phase three. I can't, and I think everybody understands that.
Right.
But that's why I'm saying if we said something.
So what would happen then, Scott, if, let's say that the city, that the planning commission and the city council opted not to approve what you're actually asking for? Because of a park, we still, how would, how would, how would that ever have been triggered? I mean, in other words, we've, we've been talking about that triangle.
When I tried to move from eleven, as soon as I did, I wanted to do a lot transfer from eleven, that would, that would have triggered that discussion.
Yes, yes.
That would have triggered it. Now we're, we're basically, I'm, I'm just, I'm telling, I'm just telling you that.
It's not going to hap.
I'm okay with saying it's going to be in phase three. It's just, I, I don't know, at this point in time, it's hard for me to guarantee that I'm going to have the ability to put seven and a half acres over there without knowing what that development plan is outside of my perimeter. I, I don't know yet. It kind of depends on what we do as development in phase three. What are we going to be doing? What kind of operations am I going to have in phase three? Is, am I going to have type of operations? Is I'm going to have a problem with public access nearby? I don't know. Or, or, or at least it would limit me from doing that if I needed to. So I'm just trying to figure out how we can, phase two's not going to trigger it. If we do, if phase three does it, but we don't allow to go forward in phase two until we, until we try to come up with a solution that makes it a public park together, I, I just can't do it without knowing how it's going to be developed and, and working with my security folks.
And so is the big challenge.
Whether I want to or not. I mean, I would, if I could, I would, believe me, I would. But I can't until, I don't have the authority to do that from a security perspective.
So, so is the big challenge moving that perimeter wall, moving that perimeter in?
So if you look, we have, we've moved our perimeter in from the north. We're going to move our perimeter in from the east, you know, and that took a little bit of doing.
Well, that, I guess that's my question, is how complicated was it to move the perimeter to fall, okay, right away?
The north wasn't bad because, and, and you, again, you don't have, I think I gave some of you guys that lot picture there, but.
Yeah, right here.
Yeah, our property, if I had, can I use that? So the building right here, our, it's about, on this steel map, it's probably right here, my building is. It's like eighty feet or something like that. But what goes on in that building? Doesn't matter. It's like me being across the street in a leased building and somebody can park right at the front door, right? Over here, it was a little problematic because of things go on over here. Okay, they got approved because we have to give mitigation measures to the government, how we're going to deal with this, and first layer defense, second layer defense, all that stuff. We figured out a way to do that. Now, now, now we're going to go back to the government at some point and say, okay, now we want to make this our perimeter. And pretty soon we're going to be this little island, you know, and are we going to be able to continue to do the kind of work that we do here if we continue to do our perimeter? And, and it's, it is important what goes on in the facility and where it goes on in the facility. That's why phase four was, that's really why this little piece in phase four was there, because of what happens in that area.
You just can't have people on that road because it's too close to your highly sensitive government stuff.
People and/or traffic.
Right.
Always people, sometimes it's traffic. So this is a public road that's going to be a high-traffic road. There are issues with migration because of sensitive, sensitive equipment, all those kind of things and security that we had to work through. So it was kind of tough. It takes a while to do that.
Is it critical that, is it Continental? Is that the, the, is it critical that Continental make that connection publicly? Or, for example, if there was a public park in three, could Continental just be a, you know?
Dead end.
Devolved.
A dead end.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah. That, that was, we, we've talked about that because this, this, this part right here was not one of the, I don't think that was one of the traffic mitigation issues.
No.
This is all internal.
As far as traffic flow, Nash will take care of it. So the Continental going through is just for a little bit of extra convenience. It's a much lower priority, just to get to the offices that will be built there.
I, I'm just wondering what the, what the possibility of moving that perimeter in to get the public park in three? And that's the thing that you can't guarantee right now and.
No, but if I, but the thing is, if I put, it depends on where I would put the park. If I put the park over here, I don't say it's that shape, somewhere over here, right? That may be different for me because of the, because of what's going on right here where it's close to proximity to what we're doing, right? So, and you've got this little road here, this dedication here that, that in my mind, if you, if you were, even if you were just going to take it and not use it unless.
Well, that dumps right into the golf course.
But then, yeah, but that's like a perfect, like, end of the road.
Turnaround.
Parcement.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Some of it's like, well, I don't, you know, with that, I mean, some of this, we've thought through, thought through some of this stuff on how I would do that. It's just I can't commit to it. And then, and then, and to me, that's the best opportunity for me to do that without putting the park up here along El Segundo Boulevard, which is probably the most ridiculous place to put it. Certainly, certainly that's a lot more valuable land up there.
It's the most valuable land for commercial on the site, you bet.
So, you know, I mean, that, I, it wouldn't make sense to do that. So, anyway, that's, I'd just like to be able to, if we can figure out a way to, to try and, I don't want to, I don't want to say it wrong. I don't want to say kick your can down the road for the park, but make it to where we have to, we're compelled to resolve this before anything goes on with phase three.
Yeah, I, I'm sensitive to Scott's need to get this done. Having had a little association with the government, I know if you don't spend it, you lose it, and it doesn't go back into your budget. And so one thing that the city has wanted to do for a very long time is get Nash through. And as much as I want a park for El Segundo, I want the land, as Brenda said, this is private property. And so there is an intention, maybe, for the city to get a park. But we're talking about getting the Nash extension in, and that's really important too. And I, in the conversation that Brenda and I had with Scott, is if this doesn't move forward, we may lose the Nash extension because the money will be gone. Because budgeting in the government is a little weird. If you don't spend it, you lose it. And then they say, oh, you didn't spend that ten million dollars this year? You don't need it next year. So there's, you know, I, I have a sense of urgency for the city to get Nash through.
And I agree with you, Carol. I think it's important because, because Scott, Mr. Posen's been here through this discussion for all these years, and if somebody were to take your place or step in or try to fill in your shoes, you, you have the knowledge and you have the experience that, of negotiating with the city and what's been said. That, I mean, that's very valuable information, these talks that, that have been transpiring.
No, I.
Go ahead.
Well, I agree with Carol and Brenda, but even more so than Raytheon at risk of losing the money. I think if, right now, if the road, Raytheon's only obligation is five million dollars in 2027. The road costs at least double, probably triple that. So if the city really does want the Nash Street extension, that cost is not, the differential isn't going to be assumed by the city.
They're not going to build a road for five million bucks.
So some other developer has to assume the cost. I wasn't part of the circulation plan. I don't know. I mean, is Nash Street, if you're telling me it's critical to the city's development, then it's critical. I don't know enough to have an opinion one way or another on that, but I think if it is and we want it developed, I'm not sure how else that is accomplished.
I feel like they're obligated to build Nash Street no matter what. Am I wrong in that regard? If they build one square foot, everything happens as is written right now. And if they don't build it by a certain deadline, we also get five million dollars.
But they still have to build it?
They still have, if they develop one square foot, we get the road no matter what.
No, that's, that's all right. That, that's, that's right. If we, right, if we, if we do any more development, actually, I think it's.
It was phase one, phase two.
But they could not do anything.
If I don't do anything, if I don't do phase two.
If he doesn't do anything.
Right, he could not do anything and we never get a Nash Street extension.
If I could maybe describe this, this, I really asked, I really wanted Ken Berkman, our public works director, to be here tonight to answer this question. And he had a, a family emergency and he couldn't be here. And I'm going to try to describe it best I can, based on how we described it. So I said, so in, in ten years, if they don't build Nash, Raytheon is required to give us five million dollars. Yes, yes, true. I said, is there a scenario where if the development agreement expires, and it will expire, after the development agreement expires and they didn't develop phase two, phase three, or anything, and development agreement expires, is there a scenario where Raytheon or anybody else would not be required to build Nash? He said, he said, that's true. There, there is an, there is a situation where Nash will not be built.
Right, if they don't do anything with phase two, they just stop.
Phase two or three.
It doesn't trigger any of these obligations.
Exactly. So, and then, and then, and then the development agreement lapses. It's, it's, it's done.
Then it's over.
Then they're, they're not obligated to build Nash. It could remain as a private driveway.
Yeah, that, that's the point. I think if we don't do anything else, we've, we've changed it now to where it's, because we have four phases, we've changed it to where if we do anything in phase two, three, or four, before it was phase two because there was only two phases.
Right.
So it's really the same thing.
Right.
Right? Then, then we have to build Nash. But my, my, the point is that if, if, if I can't keep this support for this, for whatever reason, then I'm concerned that we're going to, we, we won't get this fifteen-year, so we're going to have a ten-year. We're going to, we could be in a situation where we pay five million dollars and we don't do anything here at all. And I don't want to get us there, but as you can imagine, as we go through all these things, I've had three leadership changes. There's going to be more coming up because we're consolidating our businesses. I don't want to lose this momentum that we have, that we've worked hard to keep because of leadership changes. Somebody else doesn't see this as something that's important, and they could easily do it. They could easily, they could just say, no, we've got more important things to do than worry about, you know, just go find a, a leased building somewhere.
So if you do nothing, where do you put those thousand employees additional?
We'll either take them someplace else, or we'll go another city or another state, or we'll, we'll, because we're, we're relocating a lot of people here. We're not finding eleven hundred people in this area. They're pretty, they're all employed, good people are employed. So they come from other states, or we'll, or we'll put, you know, just go get leased space that we can here, some here, somewhere else. They're going to go where the talent, where they can get the talent.
Well, and at the time, you were really, were downsizing. You were taking, because you were really not needing everything that you have, that you're talking about, that you do need now.
No, we got out of every leased facility in El Segundo we had, and, and then last year, well, we, at the year, what's this, 2019? 2018, we got out of our last building up Imperial, and we were planning for growth. We were getting out of that building. We'd already made commitments, they had already done, and we had to basically watch it walk. And then I'm out looking for fifty thousand square feet while I'm getting out of a hundred and fifty thousand. I mean, how stupid is that?
It's a cycle.
So, you know, it looked like, it kind of looked like.
So you, you made a recommendation, if we continue talking and it gets approved and sent upstairs for their approval, city council, to, before anything further in phase three, the discussion, phase two, you would sell your, the, the property, we would get Nash Street. But the continued conversation of, of an open park, which is out of the goodness of Raytheon, wanting to do something with the possibility of opening up to be a public park, if it's outside of your perimeter, that discussion is your recommendation that we can continue to talk about, or you can continue to talk about with the city?
We're going to, we're going to lock that down in this development agreement. To have something just floating out there that we're going to talk about another five years doesn't make any sense. We should, if, if we're giving the benefit of letting them phase this so they can build it in a way that's more cost-effective for them, then in return, we get certain guarantees of a park. Those athletic fields, the, the campus fields.
I agree completely.
Those, that was FedEx's property. We got it as part of a development agreement. This is what we do. This is part of our role. So I, I just don't like the idea of having it kind of wishy-washy. I'm fine with saying, let them do phase two, but once you break on phase three, I want to have something in there that says, we're going to get this park.
And, and a public park.
And a public park.
A public park.
Yes.
But he's saying, it can't say public because he doesn't know if he, he may not be allowed to do that because of federal regulations on access.
But, but does that, does that keep the?
It can't be mandated.
So, but how does that benefit the city then, if it's inside the perimeter?
Well, at least it's open space.
No, no, it's got to be in phase three, and I think, for whatever reason, the federal government says you can't. No, no, it's gotta be in phase three, and I think, for whatever reason, the federal government says you can't have, for security reasons, a public park there, then we would get a public benefit in lieu of a park, right? But the priority is park.
And how does that get written in, Ryan?
That's why we have attorneys and staff people.
Well, that's, that's why, that's why 9.3 is being added to...
Exactly.
In the worst-case scenario, we'll still get something.
Is the argument that it's vague, that you want to add language that tightens up the existing 9.3, or the recommended 9.3? Because it's, it is, it's vague.
It's very vague.
Yeah.
Right. And I don't want the public benefit to be a couple of bucks compared to losing a seven-and-a-half acre park.
I don't disagree with you, I think we need some recommendations on how to do that without impacting...
Right, my only concern is what Scott said, he may not be allowed for whatever federal regulation to build that park. And so we can't write something in here that he doesn't know he's able to do.
Sure, but we could add language to your point of saying, you know, acreage in phase three, or...
A public benefit of equal value. Thereabouts. I mean, lawyer stuff.
Yeah. Still, still, obviously it would be mutually agreeable between all of us. So, you know, we don't, we're not, we're not, we're not gonna sit here and try and figure out what that dollar value, public value is either, so...
Right.
Right, you can't.
Because it'd be different then anyway.
That's right.
But what you're saying is basically that we include in 9.3 something to the effect of, not only do we have this option of doing some alternative way to get a public benefit, is that prior to anything in phase three, we nail down the park location. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, and I don't think this development agreement says, I mean, the thing is, face...
I'm fine with that, if we nail down the location, as long as I don't, as long as I, I just can't, as you mentioned, I just can't commit that, that it will be a public park yet. But I, I mean, we have to, I can commit to that we will nail down a park location.
Yeah, no, I think that's fine, because you've already demonstrated, at least to me, your willingness to open up your park now to let kids use it or firefighters. So I have no reason to believe that you won't be as helpful to the city in the future. You know, it's just, I think, important to have that nailed down, that there will be some location nailed down in phase three for a public, for a park.
For a park.
And it may or may not be public depending on whatever.
Right. I'm, I, I, I think that works, I don't know why that wouldn't work.
So, so, help me with the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, did I, Miss here, you said, when phase three gets built, that we have to pinpoint where a location of the public park?
No, park.
Well, he says he can't guarantee it's gonna be public.
So are you okay with, with just a park, not, not necessarily a public park?
I mean, ideally, the best-case scenario is a public park that can be used by the citizens of El Segundo, that's the public benefit. The next best thing is if it's a private park and Raytheon's nice enough to allow access to the Challenger League and the firefighters and everything else.
Which is great, but a public benefit that is open, you know, one tenth of one percent of the time is not a benefit to the city.
But if, if the federal government will not allow that, if you put a public park in there, I mean, we're going around and around and around.
So, so let me just, let me also say that I have, I can tell you for a fact that I have not turned down one single person that came to me to use that park. Not one person.
I totally appreciate that, but I mean, it's, in the grand scheme of things, for the residents of El Segundo, it's not really that much of a public benefit. I mean, it's great, we drive past it all the time, I see people occasionally playing volleyball out there, it looks great, looks like a nice spot. I've never been in that park. You know, I just think if that were, if it, if that's all it became, if that's all it were after all this, it's just not that big of a benefit to the city.
So then we have, like, a list, right? The, the priority is public park. And if that doesn't work out, a private park with some other minor community benefit. And if there's no park, then I'm gonna want a huge old fat community benefit to help us put that money into somewhere else. Does that make sense?
Yes, but I would put that as a higher priority than just letting the, the city use it occasionally. I mean, that's a much, much bigger public benefit, is if there was some in-kind fee. And I, and I realize that's a negotiation for...
You're saying if it's not a public park, you'd rather get the monetary payout to use for some other better purpose, for the benefit of everybody as opposed to just, you know, getting access to a private park?
I think so, I mean, I, look, I know it was vague in the original development agreement.
It's gonna be vague when we're done here.
But, but to me, the spirit of, you guys need to sell this, I totally get this, you guys need the cash flow, you guys want to develop new stuff, I'm all for this phasing of stuff, but I feel like this vagary of the, of the public park is, it's just kinda getting pushed by the side. And in the, in the grand scheme of things, in the end, it, it may not go anywhere. And so I feel like we have one chance for the city to have a really good benefit. I realize you can't commit to it being public, but I feel like the language in this new development agreement really needs something for the city here. And, and the residents.
I agree with you, Jay.
And, and more so than just letting the Challenger League play occasionally, which is great, but it's really not enough, I, I don't think.
Yeah, good point, Jay.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I think staff understands the commission's concerns. What we could do is amend section 9.3 to say that the developer acknowledges the city's preference, that it's a public park. The balance of the proposed language could stay the same. The reason I mentioned earlier the fact that the option is to go off-site is because, at least in my, my perception, my perspective, you know, having an onsite park potentially complicates it because of the security and whatnot. So that's why I thought that was actually a really, um, a good positive development, was that maybe there's a location off-site that could be used as a public park without all the worries about security and, and things of that sort.
But they wouldn't be in the park business, they would just be providing financial benefit to the city that we would then in turn be using it for that purpose.
It's, it's an in-kind deal, which, which I'm fine with.
And keep in mind that all of this would have to come back. It has to come back before the commission and the council. And so you're going to have another say whether you think that this is, because it's, as, as 9.3 is written now, prior to the development of phase three. So they will not be able to develop phase three until they get this approval on either a onsite park, public or private, whatever it is, or this other option, which is to potentially funding or finding a location off-site. So, you know...
That's how it's written now, is just sort of what we're asking, or did we need to add something?
If I may, I could make two suggestions. One would be to put in the stated preference for a public park as the city's first option. And then also something to address, um, the, the development of the park, but in vague terms, because obviously if it's a private park, we wouldn't really care necessarily. But I would suggest that we leave the rest of it as is, because this decision will be made in the future and the priorities may be different then. I think that the public park option will still be the highest priority, and I think we'll all agree to that. But what happens after that, if it's going to be a private park with some access or cash equivalent? That may flip, and it may flip back and forth several times, and I don't think you should, should tie the hands of future planning commissions and city councils on that.
So when you write the language, it's the city's preference.
Yes.
That's, you know, that's a suggestion, is, it's not, there's really nothing binding on that, right?
I understand, but the reason why that works is because this requires future negotiation, and that gives, that sort of sets the direction for the, for the negotiations.
All right, why, why don't you, why don't you say, if, if you wanted, can I offer this? Why don't you say something like, the developer and the city agree that is the preference of the city of El Segundo, or they acknowledge that it's the, the first priority of the city of El Segundo to get a public park, if possible?
And if not.
Something like that.
Right, and that's the other part.
There's gonna be a park.
And if not.
There's gonna be a park.
Right.
There has to be a park.
Yeah.
I have no choice but to have a park in this, in this campus, there has to be a park there. If I do nothing but phase two, there's still gonna be a park there.
Right, but the way that we have 9.3 written, that are agreed upon, you know, terms and discretion, that it doesn't necessarily have to be a park, there can be other compensation.
No, I'm saying that, or, I'm just saying maybe that language of acknowledge, you know, the preference is kinda like, you know, that's a soft, that's kind of a soft word, is what I'm, is what I'm getting at.
It's a very soft word.
What if both parties acknowledge that the, that the preference, the soft word, is the first priority? Does it strengthen it all?
Well, I liked Michelle and Carol's language, which was, and if not, what?
Yeah.
What?
Well, then, then there, you know, consideration for an in lieu cash donation to the city to create some recreational facilities.
Yeah.
And that if, if, if Raytheon has a private park, they have a private park, and we have the money to do what we can do in the city.
Yes, that makes sense.
So are we guaranteed that when we get to phase three and we're talking about parks, it's gonna come back before us in city council? That's how that's written? Okay.
There's no way around that.
Okay.
Unless they want to build it on 11, which they don't.
Because it would require an amendment to the DA.
To...
As, as written, the parties may amend the agreement and supporting documentation. So any change, if they, if they would trigger that, would have to come back to you on 9.3.
It might have to be a shall. Terms and conditions change, parties shall amend the agreement supporting documentation.
Well, I think, yeah, we can put that in there, the only reason it's may is because it's all, this is all just an option.
Yeah, if they don't ever get there.
Right.
But if, if you do amend, then, then you've gotta amend the DA. All right. Well, I'm glad to hear Raytheon is expanding and growing. I did pull up your, um, Public Records, um, PR report about the, um, profits that Raytheon made last year. And astounded to learn that, was it a billion, 325? In stock buybacks because of all the excess cash. The company purchased 2.3 billion shares for 400 million in 2018. And for the full year, they purchased 6.7 million shares of common stock for a billion 325.
And we're merging.
What's that?
And we're merging.
And you're merging with who? Who are you merging with?
United Technologies.
Oh, my God.
That's the potential merger, so that you can, there's reasons for everything that happens in the past, huh?
Right.
What is, what's the timing of that merger?
I'll just, I'm, I'm not authorized to give any information on the merger, but I can just tell you that the public, the public announcement was, um, hopefully by the end, middle of next year.
Well, if we can help you phase this out in order to develop more office buildings to keep more employees in El Segundo, I definitely think that's a win-win. I think we're getting NASH, if that helps us get NASH quicker, that's great. And, um, I appreciate the conversation we had about the park and the public benefit. I think we've given enough guidance to staff to kinda let you guys know what we expect. I don't know if that even needs to come back to us, right? You're gonna change it and take it right to council?
I think the direction was...
If we have a consensus here?
Ultimately clear enough, if there's a consensus up there that we can draft that and, and add it to the language, and it's not significant enough that it has to come back.
Right, right, okay.
And when would that go to council?
We have it scheduled for 20th, 20th, yes, August 20th.
All right, will you just do me a favor when you do revise it, I mean, I get the agendas anyway, let me see the language that you guys came up with about the park, just so I can see if it makes sense.
Mr. Chair, this is a public hearing, so before you, before the commission makes a decision, you may want to close the public hearing.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Uh, any other comments, Scott?
No, I'd like to see the language too. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Any further comments, Mr. McKenzie? Nothing? Just here to watch? All right, thanks for being here. Uh, seeing no one else, we will close public communication, all further comments will come from the dais.
I just wanted to take a quick minute and make mention that actually this evening, the chamber, El Segundo Chamber installation's happening right now at the lakes. And we were talking about how, um, how Raytheon is being, um, such a good corporate citizen to El Segundo that where, where we feel that they've lacked, they are actually being honored tonight at the El Segundo Chamber installation as 2019 Business of the Year. So congratulations to you for that.
Nice.
It's very exciting, and that's happening right now, so congratulations.
I want to thank staff for getting us this package in a really timely manner. It's very helpful in supporting documents that I hadn't seen previously, so thank you. And then the other thing, not tied to what we're talking about tonight necessarily, but I thought it was fascinating to hear the number of employees that you are hiring this year and the potential for that. And we had a little conversation with Jay today about the possibility of getting some statistics or anecdotal information from talent acquisition on where those employees might be going. How many actually are, are able to stay in El Segundo, income levels, just as we have a housing conversation, ongoing housing. I think that would be really helpful.
I want to thank Scott for the time that he gave to us individually to give us background and information on what's happening at Raytheon. And I think getting the NASH extension is gonna be a benefit for, for everyone.
I agree. Nat, bless you. I, I'm excited to see the phasing, bless you, the phasing, the development of this, I think you guys are, are on the right track. Very happy to help phase it so that it's more financially viable. You know, I think the park's important, so I'm, I'm anxious to hear that conversation go further, so thank you.
Okay, I think we have a consensus before I go for a vote about wanting it to be a public park. Do we have a consensus that, that public park should be developed by Raytheon and/or the developer? Because the city is not gonna have the money to do anything.
So, so I work with master plan communities all over the country, and it's very common that they create their own park. It's a, it's, it's a good sales incentive for their own residents, it's great. And then they hand it over to the, to the city or the county. And that development's a really important part of it. So I, I believe that the developer should, whether it's Raytheon or somebody else, should be, uh, responsible for developing that park.
So I, I think we have consensus, so can we write that into the development agreement? And that little corner right by the golf course will be perfect, because if you're working there, you can walk through the park, go hit some balls over at Topgolf, go back to work, whatever you want.
That'd be great.
Right? It's all gonna come into place.
Yep.
All right, um, so with that, I think we've given probably more than enough direction for what the consensus here up here. And I will accept a motion as modified.
I will make a motion as modified, because the language is already exists in 9.3 for the El Segundo South Campus Specific Plan, ESSCSP, Environmental Assessment Number EA 905, to amend the development agreement number DA 11-2 and conditions of approval for the 142-acre project site at 2,000-2,100 East El Segundo Boulevard pursuant to the adopted environmental impact report.
All right, there's a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, 5-0. Thank you, everyone, thank you staff for your time on this.
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, that brings us to Continue Business Nun, and next agenda item, report from Planning Commissioner, Building Safety Director.
I just wanted to remind the folks in, on, on TV land that we, planning commissioners don't normally meet every week, but we do have a, a next meeting next week on August 8th. Thank you.
Uh, Planning Commissioner comments?
I have tickets for the El Segundo Auxiliary Children's Hospital Los Angeles Wine Festival on September 14th. That all the profits go directly to Children's Hospital, lots of good wine, food, lots of fun, music, and a great silent auction.
Carol, where's that, where's that at?
It's at the International Nursery from 5 o'clock until 7:30 PM.
Right on PCH?
Right on PCH.
Right in the backyard, what a great event.
Perfect.
Thank you.
I, I have kind of a dumb comment, I love that Scott put in the blinds, but was there a problem with glare before? And I kinda liked it that people stuck their head in and thought, hey, what's going on in here?
Well, you can put the blind up.
Yeah, I, I would suggest that we open them up, I think it's nice.
Big changes from a new city manager.
Huge changes.
There was, there was a, there was a meeting we had in the middle of the day, maybe even in the morning time, and the, the sun came right in, and, and some of the folks said there was a glare that was behind...
Well, I think the planning commission meeting should have them up.
Yeah, I like to look at all the people having fun at the farmer's market while we're in here, working.
When I first came in, I thought, wait, is it a closed meeting? What's, this looks secret, so...
It's the narcissists on the, on the dais.
That's right.
We'll put you in charge of blind, uh...
You got it.
Every meeting.
I'd like them to do remote control, Sam, if you could...
Before the Pledge of Allegiance, Jay will now adjust the blinds. And we'll all stand up. All right, thank you, everyone, we are adjourned, our next meeting is next week, August 8th, 5:30, thank you.
Thanks, everybody.